All right. Good evening. This is a Dyton Historical Commission meeting on February 8, 2022, and we're here at Old Town Hall. It's a hybrid meeting, and it is being recorded. I'm Pat Gales, the chairperson. And present is -- oh, here's Ken.
Pam Nickerson.
Pam Nickerson.
Pat Olson.
John Lawrence.
Bill Broad.
In walks Ken, our liaison.
I'm late, I guess, like in traffic.
Barely late. I'm sure that likely tough to get through every now and then. Does anyone need an agenda? Okay, because I have an extra one. First, so we're to order. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing is the Secretary's report. I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of January 11, 2022. Let's go, moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, okay, let's vote. It'll be a roll call vote. Pam? Aye. Pat? John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes -- wait, the minutes of January 11, 2022, but I have a correction. It was the date on when we were going to the CPC committee meeting. The minutes say December 16, 2021, but it was January 20, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Yep, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Pam? Aye. Pat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you. Okay. I just want to change the order here. So I'll take -- because I'm going to do the balance and expenses first and then talk about the capital outlay meeting and then FY '23 budget, because the capital outlay meeting and FY '23 budget will kind of blend together. So can I have a motion to take balance and expenses out of order? Make a motion to take balance expenses out of order. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Although in favor, Pam? Aye. Pat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So our balance is the same as last month. It's $725.50 with the $300 that is committed to the overlay map. And so that leaves our expendable amount again at $425.50. Moving on to the capital outlay meeting. Rafa and I went on February 1 to meet with the Capital Outlay Committee meeting. And Ken was there, as was their full committee, and Mike Mullin, the town administrator. Was it Robert Riordan, is that his?
Yes, the Fintcom is the chair.
He's the chair. Brenda Herbick's on it. And Janelle Vining was there, the treasurer, so.
And Mary Hathaway.
And Mary Hathaway was on Zoom. Yeah. So we talked about, you know, like I told you in my email, that the discussion centered around the continuing the updating and documenting of our historic properties, if it should be part of the operating budget versus lump sum capital expenses. So we discussed that. It is the work of the Commission to be in charge of these surveys. Okay? Mass Historical Commission prefers the use of preservation consultants. So we kind of like have to look at, you know, the definition of the various rules the Commission does. Can we do this under our -- within our power to do it? Should it be within our operating budget versus always a capital expense? The Finance Committee will begin working on the budget in March or April, in April, as they usually do. So we'll work with the town administrator on the budget. And I did have a meeting with Mike. So the idea from Mike was, oh, maybe we could approach the CPC as a yearly funding source for preservation work. So that was an idea. While we were there, too, we also reviewed the Segregated Schoolhouse proposal. And the consensus was that the request was needed and just to keep the Capital Outlay Committee apprised of any expenses as we get closer to FY '25. So consequently, I reached out to Mass Historical Commission and Stacy Spies as our preservation consultant that we're working with. And I sent you the email today with all of that information that they sent back. So I asked basically if -- how other communities fund their survey updates. Many use the CPA, you know, the money from CPC to do it. Sometimes as a direct appropriation, you know, from the budget. Sometimes it's built into their annual budget, special funds. I found it interesting that some -- Marblehead has a gift account that they use. Clinton actually had their Historical Society fund it.
That's not going to happen.
I was like, wow, they got a really, you know, rich historical society, you know? Gift accounts, you know, work too. There's not a minimum amount of properties, but the general feeling through the emails I got is you got more bang for your buck with the larger projects. Of course, the carrot is, you know, the grant from Massachusetts Historical Commission of 50% reimbursement. They will accept forms by volunteers. They're kind of -- but you have to still meet the standards of that the Mass Historical Commission has set. So over the years, you know, their standards have become more stringent than when they started in the '70s and '80s. I also took a look at Berkeley. Berkeley has 197 properties. We have like 139, I think it is. Their survey started, looked like about in the '70s, too.
Why don't they have more properties?
Huh?
Why don't they have more historical properties?
Our people were busier. Oh, no.
You said 197.
197, yep. And they -- it looks like they had a consultant in 2017 that did a lot of their forms. Rehoboth has about 270 properties. And from the dates in the ones that I looked at real quickly, they had one person that seemed to work on them in 1976. And then they had a couple that were done in 2005. And I just thought it'd be interesting to see what the communities around us, what they were doing. So anyway, that's basically what the Capital Outlay Committee meeting was about. So the discussion was, can we do this? You know, I asked you, you know, is it feasible for us to do it? What pieces could we do? How do we put a money figure to it? So what are your thoughts? Did I miss anything from the Capital Outlay Committee?
No.
Okay.
My personal thoughts, I don't think we have the time or energy to do it ourselves. It's a lot of work. And Town and Elaine, and Elaine Valley did a lot of the work back in the '70s. I'm not sure how much time we have to devote to that. I know some of us are retired, but some of us aren't retired. I do think, my personal feeling is that we ought to go for the grant again. I guess it would be this year.
For FY '23, the one that we've already put in?
Right.
Yeah.
Go for it again, because I think you -- I thought you said the last meeting that they don't normally give back to back.
Right.
But I would just wonder if we skip a year, rather go to CPC for $25,000. Skip a year, hopefully we get the grant. And then we can -- well, I don't know if CPC will come up first before we apply for the grant, but we can apply for the grant, not this fiscal year, but not this year, but fiscal year 2024.
Yeah.
And hopefully we get the grant. And so it's only $12,500 that comes out of CPC.
Right.
The grant is $12,500. But I just, it's a lot of work. And like you said, it's a lot more stringent now as to what they were. And that's, that was the impression I got from the emails that you got that you were forward that we hire consultants. None of us are, I mean, we love, obviously, we love historic houses and everything else. Some of us own historic houses. We sell them here anyway. But doesn't mean we have the time or the energy or the capability of doing all that work that needs.
Right, right.
We want to make sure it's done right.
We want to do what we can to preserve as many houses as we can
and get as much information as we can.
Right. Yeah. Our grant for CPC, the FY '23 grant, we met on January 20. Well, I had to tell them that we didn't get the letter of intent accepted for the survey and planning grant so that, you know, we would be on the hook for the full $25,000. And at that point, they took it under advisement. My sense is there are some supporters there, some kind of, I don't know if it'll go forward or not. And this kind of runs into my conversation with Mike at our meeting on Monday. He was looking, we have to really sit down with the CPC and meet with them because he was looking at it like if we could do a minimum number of properties a year, especially where we have a consultant that would be familiar with the town, that, you know, like 10 to 20 properties for under $5,000 because then it's under the procurement kind of thing, if that was even a possibility. But the funding source being CPC, we would have to discuss any and all options with them before making any decisions. He also feels, you know, that a preservation consultant is, you know, sometimes the easier and the better way to go. There were members at the Capital Outlay Committee that, you know, if we can do it in-house, to do it in-house. But it is a lot of work. So through the discussion with Mike, he's like, if someone's going to be doing that kind of work, would that involve some pay for those hours if a Commission member is going to do it? So lots of things to think about. Absolutely.
I would love to have someone fund the whole thing. Wouldn't that be great? You know, please don't think I'm against getting money for nothing, okay?
Yep.
All I really wanted was someone to sit down with us and show us how to do it. So she's going to knock off, is it around 100 houses? Is it 94?
94.
So she's contracted for 94 houses. We have 139 that are there?
439 houses on the survey.
439 houses, okay. So she's knocking off a quarter of them, right? Since there's no hurry to get any of these things done, I thought that she would sit with us. Does the maps -- You can't do that no more. You have to take the maps from a certain -- yes, it's much more stringent. But it's not impossible, you know, it's not. So the history of the home, the history of the people, where they want it and making it the right size, that was my difficulty. I couldn't -- Because it moved everything else on the form.
I think I figured that out.
And Pat was helping me with that. But it -- You don't have to knock off 100 of them in three months. You know, that's not what we're doing here. Someone sat down and showed us how to do it, yeah. So maybe you do five a year?
We have the tools to do that because we have the technical manual that Peter Stott sent us from.
I have that as well. He emailed me that years ago.
Yeah, so you have that and you have the manual from a survey of how to do it. So you got those tools to do it.
Yep.
They didn't say it's impossible, you know, to get it done. Certainly, if you want to try it, I'm like, we can try it.
So this Rehoboth person, was that just a volunteer? When you mentioned that Rehoboth did so many of them, was that a volunteer or was that a Stacy Spies?
I don't know. I don't think, I couldn't see.
And Berkeley?
Berkeley, it looked like the 2017 ones were a consultant. It was a consultant.
And ones prior to that?
There was a name of somebody, but I don't know.
Okay. Because that wasn't -- They both seem to have started in the 1970s.
Right.
Originally.
Right.
But Pat said that from day one of this whole process with hiring Stacy.
I thought it was something doable.
That we wanted to get it done, but we wanted to leave with tools and training. I agree. I don't think it's above us to do five a year. We just need a template.
And you knock them off.
Have the template. And from what? And you, I think you could, try it. I think it's worth a try. But I'm not too sure exactly like what they're going to accept. So the only way you're going to find out is to get one done and to try it.
Right.
I sent one in to them.
And I, and what, did they send it back?
They didn't like my map. They didn't, couldn't fit their map onto. So I sent one in about, you know, the type of house, the structure, the years, the whatever, the story that went with it. And they rejected me because -- So I can do it the right way.
So I think the map piece involves using a snippet tool on it.
Okay.
Which I kind of like was working with this past week.
The pictures, they don't want a head-on picture of your house. They want it slightly at an angle. They don't want any people, they don't want any cars in the picture. So yeah, they give you guidelines, they tell you what they want, so you just follow.
There's also aspects that others of us are better at than others, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it doesn't mean that just because Pat starts that one application, it can't be then worked on with the map with snippet. And, you know, Rafa did a great job writing up some of the houses. Maybe it's all hands on deck.
So after this next, this one, the CPC work going around the world, going around it now, and it's accepted and everything, that will give us enough money to do roughly half of what we want.
Right.
And did Mike, did he say about the CPC? He doesn't have any authority over this.
No, that's why you have to meet with them to discuss the ideas, you know, that we have, you know, whether to keep going for $25,000 or do a yearly stipend to $5,000. What would that cover? You know, how many houses could you get done? You know, it's all conversations that have to be had. It's that process.
Say we have a projected, if you don't count, I'm pretty sure that's going to pass. I don't know about the town meeting type of, but it probably will if the Finance Committee endorses it. So that would be half of the work done by that same girl, Stacy, I guess.
It would have to go out for a bid again. And I would think that she'd be being familiar with the town, that she would apply again because that's half the job is getting to know the town.
So, so it -- As long as you don't count inflation over the years, but would be another 50K to finish to route a little over 400 houses. So, and if you sit --
It will be 50 for, I don't know, it'll be, if we get the survey and planning grant, it will be $25,000 for two years for 200 houses. Because, yeah, yeah.
So worst case, if you wanted to have somebody else do it, it would be 50K that you need to finish, pretty much finish that project, that part of it anyway. So, and then on one of those years, say, the every other kind of theory that they would okay, you know, the Mass Historical would okay another grant, so you get another, subtract off 12 and a half K from the 50, so that'd be 40.
Right.
Whatever, a little over, something like that. So less than the 40, 30 something. Which is not an amount of money, I mean, when it comes to CPC because, well, this CPC, in my opinion, does not overly spend. And we don't get, well, we do have that tight playground thing that's going to come along. And that's going to take a little bit, but there's still plenty of money in there. So I don't know.
Is that the money within the CPC, like in buckets? Like there's some for open space and recreation, some for historical, some for the housing, public housing?
I think so.
So each bucket has.
Yeah, there is a subdivision of the cost factor and so forth, so. I'm not sure. What kind of, some kind of software tools if you try to do it yourself? I mean, I'm not familiar with what you did or you tried to do or whatever.
The gentleman from the Mass.
Oh, Peter Stott.
Sent me a packet. And the packet has directions, how to fill out each line, how to, you know, there's a whole bunch of lines. And he, the directions clearly tell you how to do it. My computer knowledge wouldn't let me, with the PC that I was doing, gather this map from a certain page. You have to take a particular map, not just any map. And then you take that map and you need to make it into a two-by-two. You need to shrink it down.
Yeah.
And so nothing else on the form gets moved.
Right. It's like a passport picture.
It was just beyond me. It doesn't mean it would like, you might get it in a snap. Well, I couldn't.
Were you saying, if you're talking about one property at a time here, I mean?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Now, when you say that.
Every property has a piece of map to it?
Yes, yes.
It's the GIS mapping system. Because you can go on that website and then you use your snippet tool and you get a, take a snip of that map. Then you can, that goes like on your, in your pictures, under screenshots. And then you can manipulate that. You can crop it, grow it bigger, smaller, whatever. And that keeps it from expanding in the Word documents. But Word documents are hard when you add something like that. They do tend to jump, you know, so.
Is it a piece of the map? You don't put the whole map on?
No, no.
How do you extract a portion of it?
It tells you they want to see one intersection.
Yeah.
So wherever your house is, they want.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, how physically, how functionally do you actually do that with a computer?
Oh, it's a little program called, on mine, it's a snippet tool. And it's little scissors.
You can make the blocks bigger and all that.
And you, you tell it you want to take a snip.
Was that from screenshot?
It's like a screenshot, yeah. It makes like a --
You get to like edit that.
Clip a program.
Yeah, is that, is that what you use?
No.
Oh.
All right, so, okay.
I have to say one other thing. Earlier, five minutes ago, you said, knowing the town is half of it right there.
Yeah.
You said that.
Yeah.
Okay, we know the town.
Right.
You know, so, you know, half of it is Stacy's already got a year under her belt and she's familiar with the properties and whatever. Yeah, she's got a year. We know the town, we live here.
Right. And I think the other thing is, I think the other thing with that, too, is the documentation, your source, your source documentation and making sure that all of where you got your information is done properly. I didn't look at the piece where, from their guidelines, like how they want their sources done. So that's another piece of it. Rafa, do you have any input? No? I think we can try it. Let's try, you know, we're working on one, see what, you know, develops. Pat, for the next meeting, do you still have what you did?
Not, no, I have a hard copy of it. I don't have it on a PC because I was using a different PC.
We'll just bring the hard copy so we can see that.
I have that.
For comparison. And we'll continue working towards, you know, hiring a consultant and seeing what happens. We do have the grant that's already submitted to CPC for FY '23. Take a look and see what happens with that. Meeting with Mike. He's going to set up a meeting with CPC to discuss future funding and how to set it up, what is feasibly possible, and what their thoughts are on it because, you know, they're the funding source.
Okay. Do you have a response?
Yep.
Well, the CPC seems like a very independent entity. And I don't, if he were to come before the CPC or whatever, and I'm not sure. Trying to push his way around, but.
I don't, I think it's a matter that we all have to have the conversation so we know what the thoughts are and how, you know, the CPC would see how they want the historical funds to be used. Is this a feasible idea for use?
Well, that's going to go over to be on.
May I?
I, are there interns?
I thought of interns. There might be interns, that's an idea.
I mean, we've got BCC, we've got UMass Dartmouth. Up there, we've got Bridgewater. My goodness, within 20 miles, we must have seven colleges, right? Eight would be.
I know there was some discussion at one of the selectmen's meetings about using interns for some things.
Oh, why not? They could be research interns in any subject, just to research. And then they could also be students that are history students.
We've had interns in the past that the town has paid for, but we're a little reluctant at that. We use them all the time at the courthouse, never paying them a cent. They got the experience, they decided, well, they're not, they wanted to go into probation or whatever. But I do agree with what Bill was saying. I think they're going to be a little sensitive. I know when we went for our grant for Dyck and Stark Society, at the time, that time, one of our members was the sister of one of the selectmen. They kind of thought the selectmen were pushing this whole thing and she had to kind of back off. We kind of took over to get it passed and everything else. But there was a comment made, the selectmen are not going to tell us what to do. So there is that sensitivity that we have to be.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, Mike's a pretty good gentleman as far as that's concerned.
It's a conversation that needs to be, that we need to have, you know, with all the parties present, so.
He could show the importance of, you know, what we do.
Right.
Well, that would be, a little PR from him would be, as long as it was perceived as such.
Right.
And it wasn't like strong, I mean, someone telling them what to do.
Right, right. My viewpoint on it is it's, how are we going to work together? Is this something that you guys as a CPC would consider? Is this, you know, are these possibilities? Do you see other possibilities, you know?
Although the support is very strong.
It is very strong, yes.
Currently.
Yes.
Everybody likes the idea of, you know, doing.
Yes, I agree.
So I don't think, although it could go the other way, too.
Yeah, we know. No, but the support is there now. And it's very strong for historical stuff. And they're very pleased. And even at the last meeting, Mr. Reins did say, you know, to convey to everyone that, you know, the work we're doing is really good. Good job. Good. Yeah. Yeah.
Especially about the school.
So.
Who?
School.
Yeah.
What do you, what do you, I like talking online.
All right, so.
So I got the impression from the Capital Outlay Committee that they were willing to recommend, they would encourage us to increase our budget.
Right.
But it almost sounded like they would, if we didn't apply for the CPC grant, like they would give us more money. I didn't think they, I didn't get the impression that they wanted us to do both.
No, I, yeah, they wanted us to increase the budget, to include the work into the operating budget, the preservation consulting, because it is the work, it is really more our function rather than always to be a capital out expense, is what I got. And I kind of agree with that thought that, yeah, it is our work. But then it comes to how, how do you fund it? Manchester, I get this right, the capital outlay, Ken, seems to favor we, our budget increase requests rather than continually going before.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, to incorporate the preservation.
We kind of roll it out into our budget every year, ask for a higher amount that might help us get through. Who knows how many houses.
But if we also have to do that, then we have to make sure that we're saying that it can be.
It will be done.
It will be done. And that's where, you know, if it's volunteer work to do it.
Yeah.
Just what, and what are we going to need to do it?
Yeah.
It's not just like, say, oh, yeah, we can, we can do it. What are we going to need to do it to? Because that's what costs you the money, and time.
We're going to need that software, otherwise you'd get discouraged, right? If you don't have the right tools, like anything else.
Right. So, and then, Mike did, was thinking outside of the box at that meeting, and that's where it was like a yearly appropriation from the CPC idea came from, to kind of like offset that cost. So. I think. Information, hadn't asked a question out there, you know, to other communities. I mean, we could probably put it, Rafa, on the listserv too, and see what other communities say. How are they doing it, or are they just not doing it?
Stacy does those. Maybe she'd get her anecdotal or whatever, you know, stories or.
She tells you that in her credit. She tells you where information from, different places.
My house on Main Street, and Main 138. So she has a bibliography and references here, with footnotes. She's using such things as the history of Dayton, Find a Grave, the US Town Vital Statistics, Registry of Deeds, Bristol County North Registry of Deeds books.
She, what does she use?
Topographical maps.
Do we, do we give her anything from our own archives?
She had visited the Historical Society to get some of the.
What about all those files that? They were going through a lot of it, house cleaning through a lot of the stuff that Myrna had done and so forth. There was a lot of information in there about.
Oh, in the vault, you mean? Yeah.
Did, did, did she ask, did she, did we volunteer any of that?
She hasn't needed any of that as of yet. No, no.
She didn't ask for it.
No, no. But she has been to the Historical Society to look at the vertical files there. She will be consulting with, as, with Myrna.
But, but wouldn't that, she'd be working with only half the whole part of the work, or doing redundant things that we'd already figured out on some of these properties? For instance, who lived there or?
It's just putting it all into one spot.
It's what?
It's putting it all into one spot. These are quite detailed, these samples that she gave us. It's quite detailed.
She's doing that for every house that.
Every house.
So, for example, like.
It's a story. It's beautiful.
Yeah. My house, it says in Hill and Lane, Ezra Style, lived in my, lived in Joseph Rico Sylvia's house. Doesn't give 1860 Milk Street, doesn't say Benjamin Wright or anything like that. So how does she make that connection to my house?
Deed research, the grant or grantee deeds.
And she's doing that, because he's clearly on the deed, so Joseph Rico Sylvia.
But all that stuff that, that we have done over the years, now we. Stuff, and, you know, you know, CP, you're looking at this property, go through and see if that property is in some of the documentation that we have done over the years. That process didn't happen? In other words, she just went. That's it?
Did you look at those at all? Did you look at those samples?
I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't, it looks great, I can just tell from here, but the property there, did, she might, we might have had information on, say, that property in our own papas documentation that she wouldn't have seen, and maybe, in other words, you're saying you're cutting off a data flow to her that may be useful.
Well, I would think if she couldn't find the information that she would ask, you know, if she needed more details, that's part of her job, is to figure out which details she has, and thank you.
No, 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 compared to, compared to, basically, to do some research.
Right.
Right, but how do you know she's going to?
It is very detailed.
I don't, I'm sorry, I just can't, that's a disconnect, I mean, I.
Why?
Well, we could.
Why?
Because if I have some information here that I have, and I hire somebody to do something like she's doing, and I potentially have done a lot of the information, or somebody has done a lot of the work on, say, a property, and I didn't volunteer that to her, I'm kind of like hamstringing her, unless she's so brilliant that she's going to pick up every single scrap of possible.
Whatever you found out, whatever research you found out, wouldn't you share that with the public, with the town?
Yeah, why?
So why would you hide it to yourself? Why would you keep it to yourself?
I'm not saying myself, is that what you?
No, it just.
No, anybody.
Anybody.
Myrna, Pat.
So, since Myrna is the town historian, I would assume that she probably knows a lot about local history. So I can't, I can't fathom the idea of Stacy not consulting with Myrna.
Right, which is, or, or Pat, which is going to happen.
Or, or with the Registry of Deeds. Anybody can act as the Registry of Deeds.
Well, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem relevant to my objection. I mean, it sounds like you're talking about something totally different.
No, because you're, you're, that's the perfect way you're coming from.
Okay.
So if we do this information on a house, are we preventing or adding to that?
Where'd she get this?
No.
We have.
That's why I'm questioning.
Bibliography, look at, check out the references.
1940s, and Smith, and Kelber, and which.
She has a bibliography.
That she was able to get that information, to be honest.
You can get quite a bit, that's, yeah. And that's the difference, that's your painter.
She has to list on the back. She used six sites on that one that she had to list, you know what I mean? She had to use Myrna's book, she had to go to the deeds, it's, the society, it's, it's kind of like a college paper, otherwise it looks like plagiarism or.
Right, I'm talking about that. I expect her to do what you just said. But what about, I'm just talking about. Over there in the vault, in the other building, you know, the scrap stuff in the folders, which is all that is interesting? That information is not available to her?
If she needs it, it is.
Did you tell her about it, that it was here or over there?
I told her we have information if she needs information, so she knows to come and seek.
Why wouldn't you just say, hey, look, Stacy, when you come over here for your. I had one, but did we ever have an impersonation? I guess we didn't. It was just.
It's good, soon.
But we could send, we could have sent that stuff to her, you know, I said mail and all that, unless, because you could always.
We can't let those papers go out. That's, that's what we would just, that's why we're spending that money to have those papers put, put on, or, reproduce. They're one of a kind from the 1700s, so she had to make up.
Question, a point of view whether or not we insist on funding somebody like her to do this work as opposed to doing a shot on ourselves, or we, it isn't just going to be reciting pictures based on them in the forms and things, or, is, what about all this information, all this history that she did, a lot more?
Exactly.
Exactly, yes.
That's what I'm saying, it's just about.
I'm not sure if we're equipped to do that. I mean, we could, but it would mean X or O or S.
I think, I think we tried like 30 years ago, but everything was talked, everybody was talking about this, but nothing actually has been done until now. We had to hire a professional to do all this stuff for us. There's a financial incentive, which is, if you don't pay somebody to do anything, then nothing's going to be done.
Nobody, no.
Right, because it's an all-volunteer commission, and sometimes we have our own lives to live. You know, I can't possibly spend like, you know, the next month or so on.
It's sort of like you're paying somebody to fix your tire or something, but then the next year you decide, that was a lot of money, I'm going to, myself.
Oh, that'd be one thing I would never do.
Well, of course, it's, everything in life is time or money. I'm, I'm, I mean, do we?
I would say, Pat, bring your sample next time, and we'll continue the discussion, see what we want, you know, you know, what to do. There's mixed feelings here. I have mixed feelings about it, you know. Do I think we're capable of doing it? Or probably.
I'm not against taking free money.
Yeah.
So if someone wants to say, we'll fund this for you. I'm saying that initially, we could do this if she.
We have, we don't have to make a decision yet.
No, this is an ongoing discussion.
Like, we know we're good for the next, well, pretty good, now that everything goes right, get another 100 done. And then, why don't we just stay with that modus operandi the next time around? And then if we meet with opposition, you know, funding opposition, and, and there's no way out of it, then you force me to that anyway. You, yeah, we'll do as many of these.
Right. And also, and looking long term, so that you don't end up in the same spot where we are now, where you have 400 things that need to be updated, that there is an ongoing process for it, so that you're doing, you know, five or 10 or 20 properties a year, and you're keeping up with it, because every day there's another house that turns 100.
Exactly.
There's other historical things happening, you know, history doesn't end in the Victorian era, in the 1800s. We have, you know, Millikan in the early 1900s, we have things happen even in 1950. There are things, you know, houses and homes that may be associated to those historic events. You know, it's not quite 100 years, but it's, you know, 1920.
You're really, you're really looking at funding in general. What is the future? The passive funding has been low.
Right. So what's, where are we going in the future? We have to start building. In order to be effective, you need money to do it, and you have to be functional. So we have to figure out how we're going to do that. And it could be a combination of things, going after the monies, trying these things on our own, maybe we'll go back to school and become.
I think you need to stop being, taking a backseat in funding. I don't mean that facetiously. I mean that we need, you don't go ask for.
I don't think we have. I think we've done a great job, but.
Yeah, we.
We've, we've gotten some pretty darn good money.
Remember, CPC is our money.
Yeah, and, right. When was the last time Historical Commission was awarded the amount of money that we received from CPC plus that grant? Like, seriously?
We're going to be conscious, though, that Segregated is also one of our big and more expensive items.
Right.
That we pursue that also. I think this conversation can be continued, but I think we need to work on the budgets.
Right.
Because, quite frankly, the last time, if I remember correctly, Pat, that the Historic Commission was not invited to the Fintcom meeting.
No, yeah.
This time, you guys will be invited to Fintcom, as many, no, but we have to be realistic with our budget. Now, they, I believe it was cut, was it cut, like a half?
Last year, we put in, for this year, for 2000, and we weren't there because they met on our budget the same night that we were having a meeting, and they cut it in half. Well, that's not going to happen again, because I'm going to ask for the schedule, like, when we're going to be there, you know, right away. And then we have to go, if we're asking, like FY23, when I talked with Mike, you know, we level funded, and he said, you know, Ken, is this a workable budget for FY23? And I said, you know, that's what we agreed on. Yes, it is. And he questioned the professional technical where we had switched the money. He said, what about conferences? I said, generally, there's not a conference that is offered. It's every other year that, you know, we pay for. So that wouldn't be until FY24, so you would see an increase then for that. So, but going forward, and anything that we go in, and even Mr. Riordan said that we should build a budget for what we think we need, and then go and give your reasons why you're asking for that increase, you know, defend your, your position, and they'll take it under a recommendation, either approve it or not, and say, oh, you're right, you do need that.
And I think you're absolutely right, but I would add a little bit of PR to that. In other words, you kind of have to, if you have like a long-term succession of project plan of what you want, where you want to go in the next five years or something, you're going to be repetitiously asking for money, or, not exactly the same thing, but some of the same things. So you kind of need to be able to demonstrate what the last amount of money is done for the town. Because, because that's what always somebody's going to ask at a town meeting, or, when you're giving me money, this money or that CPC money, and what is, and now you'll be able to say, here it is, especially if this stuff was online, this was online, that's a big plus, because people can go to the website and see these, and they look at this.
As a historical commission?
That will be, yes, when they're done, they will be on the Mass Historical Commission, the MACRIS website. And we will also have hard copies of the town that'll be available at Town Hall, you know, and, and/or, you know, another, another spot, so. But your, your point about a long-term project plan, one of the things we need to do is determine, revisit our goals again, what are our long-term project plans? We need to do that. And also, I think to go back and review the things that we have done in the past two years, you know, what, what we've spent our money on, and how we've worked on being visible.
We can rest on our laurels to a certain extent, this, what the bed, you know, and everything. And then, you know, oh, and you have like a justification, where you have a paper, like a white paper, might be nice to do a white paper for what we're at, and what we're planning, and, and what we've done.
Right.
And stuff like that, and you always got to hook it to, how does it help the town? And of course, that's selling historical value as well.
One of the things that we had talked about at one of our meetings was to have like neighborhood meeting discussions, you know, talking, you know, people to come in and talk about their, their historic homes, their historic areas, you know, like the people that live on Pleasant Street, the people that live in North Dayton, you know, hear from those folks, like what history is important to them, and why it's important, and what we can do to help them or whatever, you know, so, like, neighborhood meetings.
Didn't we talk about that?
We did, yeah. Yeah.
And that's something that could happen at the Segregated Schoolhouse.
We could do that. It has to happen sooner than that. But we certainly could do, but that's good PR, you know, that kind of thing. So, like you were talking about our justification, like a white paper for, we do an annual report every year, but that could be the basis of that kind of thing too, so. So we have some ideas. We got a ways to go with our discussion on this. We're going to try some, try. Continue, as long as we can get a preservation consultant, I think we should continue doing that too.
We can, like you said, we can also, like Pass said, we can also attempt it ourselves. We just don't want us to, you know, everybody take five houses. It's going to be overwhelming.
No, no, it won't get.
Everybody's got.
No, no, no.
I would probably, quite, quite agree. These two, yeah, people are piecemeal, you know, like Pat's working on one, I can work on one. We can all see how that goes with the consultant, I think. I mean, we're not experts in this field.
No, no. And it's become a field that, you know, there, you expect some expertise in, so.
That really is impressive, so. Would CPC welcome the idea of inviting Stacy to talk about?
With the CPC?
Yeah, CPC, invite her to talk more about, if it's needed, only because Bill.
Yeah, yeah. Pat kind of sold, he sold out already.
He's supportive of us.
Right.
I'm not sure we'll be pushing.
I have no idea why.
Support, support is a necessary.
You know, it's, no one has ever, we've never discussed the, things like broad, topics like the value of history to the town or anything like that. That's really where it's at. That's the discussion, but they don't care. They, they, they know what it is, and, and they like it. They, everybody's on board, very positive. And I was very surprised, because I didn't have to.
No, they are, and they're very supportive of the historic.
I know, I, over the time period, I had no idea that could erode, but I doubt it, I doubt it. Especially if you can demonstrate with, you know, what, what we've done so far. I mean, it's pretty impressive.
Right, and this is why we went before the town for Segregated. We weren't prepared for it, quite frankly. And he asked a good question, what are your goals, what are your plans with the building? We, you know, it's not to say we want it to be like Hornby, but that's not enough.
Well, you didn't have, you didn't have, you didn't have the underpinnings there.
We didn't have no.
Right, right. I will put this like under continued discussion of preservation forms and consultant. And then for budget planning, I guess we need to start thinking about how our future budgets are going to look, what they're going to look like, and what do we, what kinds of things are we going to be doing? Do we want to continue, you know, like with our plaque markers, our signage, you know, what's going to cost us the money to do? Budget planning categories. Budget planning categories. I think this was a good discussion. Good, thank you.
Your passion.
All right. We continue.
I'm just thinking he's even watched this video later. Oh, yeah.
Pam, did you get any information on the plaques for the James Briggs House?
I did. We're kind of back to the beginning. As Gail had mentioned, Ray moved his shop six months ago. He is now at 888 West Center Street in Bridgewater, vaguely remembered. So I think we may, we might need a field trip to kind of.
Okay. You need to go visit him?
I'd like to revisit him and I'd also, I had bumped into Paul who did our Boston Post Kane. So I'd like to just pick his brain to another time and get two prices. So we're, we're on it. Hopefully next month, please.
Hey. This is Segregated Schoolhouse Inventory and Storage. Pam and Raffa and I met. We reviewed our inventory list of items in the schoolhouse. Our focus will be on what can be reused, repurposed, recycled. Some of the items there we can use for displays. Others, maybe we might be able to auction or they're just no good for anything. So.
Where's the key?
Huh?
Bridge, Key Bridge, Key Bridge.
Yeah. Oh, he put it in the Segregated Schoolhouse. Tom moved that for us.
How big is that? I didn't get to say, I saw pictures back.
Massive, yeah.
Massive. What key? I'm thinking, what is, what is that? Yeah, pretty much.
I was thinking.
I think it's important that we, that the town has that.
Yes. And we'll seek some input from Jamagyar and Tom Ferry about the wood stuff and, because they're, and the things that are on the inventory list, what they think, if they can use it to repurpose it on something, a project that they're working on, great.
I don't know if everybody's, or anybody's seen the woodwork now at the Town Hall.
Yeah.
James Briggs, they did a fantastic.
Gorgeous, gorgeous, gorgeous.
Good example of repurposing wood. I would, I would like at some point then to put some kind of a sign where the wood.
That's the, that's the plaque that Pam's working on.
I thought it was for the, I'm thinking it was for the garden.
Yeah, no, that's the, another sign, yeah.
Well, that's good, yeah.
Yeah. Because we got a picture from Dave Derrick of the house when his parents owned it. So that'll be on it and.
Good.
It's a clear picture, yeah. It's a good picture.
He donated $250, I hope you know that, to the, not the community garden, James Briggs garden.
Yeah.
So they can buy tools and stuff like that with that money. And he's offered to come down and volunteer to do some work. I told him we'll be spreading some more, so he didn't jump at that.
Who could pass that up? I mean, really?
Dayton, no.
Come on.
We had some discussion, the three of us, about can we earmark the money for any auction or sale of the items like for the Segregated Schoolhouse or whatever? So we need to have a follow-up discussion with the town administrator on, on that kind of, on those funding issues and where the monies go. So we'll continue to meet and we'll keep moving forward on that so it's not sitting there forever and ever in the schoolhouse. Moving on to the Segregated Schoolhouse. I did talk to Kathy Potter regarding the Hornbine School. I said I would contact her and she's a character on the phone.
She just, unfortunately she lost her husband a couple of months ago.
Oh, that's too bad.
Dave Donalds knows a lot. He's always posted on Facebook, Dave Donalds.
Yeah.
Entire teacher, global teacher.
Right. I guess she said she's a director.
Could be, yeah. She's got so many, involved with so much stuff.
So as we know, the schoolhouse is open the second and fourth Sundays of the month, May through September. And they do it as a multi-age classroom and they have the furnishings for such from the smaller desks right up to the desks that the older kids would use. They have the school groups that come in and they have a teacher for the day where they're actually doing the lessons in the schoolhouse. They have old pictures of the school. They have a map that show where all of their schools were in town. She has a potbelly stove that they were using for quite some time, but now they use, have an electric baseboard heat. Their major repairs, renovations, maintenance things, such as their electric baseboard comes through their CPC. It's a town-owned building, but the Hornbine School Association runs, runs it. The outhouse was grandfathered in. They actually use it. Yes. Really? Is okay with that? Yeah, because it was grandfathered in.
Wouldn't have happened here, unfortunately.
No. So this Hornbine School Association sounds like it's like a friends group because they, they run it. They charge the school kids 150 bucks a visit. $90 of that pays for the teacher, the teacher salary, and the rest goes for the electric supplies. They buy Hornbine School pencils. They've got the slates, the games that the kids would have played in the 1840s. So she did invite me to come visit at some point when it gets a little warmer and anyone else that would like to join.
Sounds like a road trip.
It does, yeah, it does.
Get ice cream after, there's in barn.
We go to the barn. So I told her when it got a little warmer, I'd give her a call and that certainly would be interested in checking it out, so.
I did that. I went to school in Swansea.
We've been doing it around, but we can also do it here, Segregated.
Yeah, right. I think the key. Did anyone go as a child? I did, from Swansea.
Yeah.
And as a child, we went from Swansea and I, my mom sewed me this dress and I had a massive bow and, you know, all the boys had such. It was fabulous. I think it was like third grade. You know, you, you had to, back then you had like the land of the lost lunchbox. We had to bring bags, I'm not, you know, the tin and, I don't know. I think it was wonderful.
Do you have a picture of you there?
What?
Do you have a picture?
Of you.
Of you.
Probably not because my mom did not chaperone, but I know I have a picture of me in the kitchen at home before I left with the bow. Oh, that would be interesting. It was great. Keeps it local. It makes the next generation very interested, interested in. And again, it shows the town what we're doing with the money that we're keeping this history alive.
I think the, one of the key things to their success is that they have that Hornbine School Association, which probably is like a friends group.
Yeah.
And they, because.
I didn't use the outhouse though.
Create a Facebook page called Friends of Segregated School.
So.
Well, we.
We'll get there.
We're going to need to, because we're, we're going to need to maintain.
Yeah.
First, we got to get our goals and our mission and all of that in place.
Raffa, you're really good.
First steps, of course. Don't put the cart before the horse. So. So move, you know, that was, that was an interesting discussion. And Raffa, you have some, you put some stuff out on Facebook, right? And you got some good responses.
Yeah. Virtually everyone thought that it's a good idea to turn the school into a museum slash mini-schoolhouse. You know, with rotating exhibits and of course, you know, if we get lucky enough to get the money that we need to.
I need to use the outhouse back at Hornbine, but.
What?
I didn't get to use the outhouse at Hornbine.
Well, thank you for sharing.
No, really, I don't remember that being part of it, but, and Raffa, you've done it. I'm sorry.
Use it then. I'm going to pass on that.
But Raffa, you've done a great job with Facebook page. I mean, spring that up too, so thanks.
Amazing how people are.
People have already liked it and, and it's, it's really, you know, kind of instituted some traffic, so.
Good, good. I talked with Joanne Racine, a former commission member, and she gave me a whole folder on.
Did she finance?
I tried, I tried. On the work that they did for the Segregated Schoolhouse way back when.
Oh, wow.
So I don't know if someone wants to take on to review it and report it back. Thank you, Raffa. I knew I.
You have to sign up for it.
I got wrapped right next to my note. That's true, so. So we'll keep moving on that. Maybe next time we'll work on forming a goal and a mission statement. Bring your ideas for that.
On everything or just on the school?
On the school.
Okay.
And then, oh, we also have to do a goal review. Okay.
But on my glasses, I thought it's a historical house murder program.
It really would be, actually. There you go. So the survey and planning grant, I did have the phase two meeting on January 20th. There was a conference telephone call with Peter Scott, Michael Steinens, I think that's how you say his name, Stacy Spies and myself. Basically Stacy went over the work that she had done on the forms, that the property survey list was finalized and she was beginning on the field work for the next phase three where she'll be working, completing those documents for all of the properties because those drafts will be due at the end of phase three. She indicated that an area form will be completed for the lower four corners area, which is Elm and Main Street and radiating out down Elm Street, like with the Unitarian Church and Cemetery, some of the houses along there, like Hadija Bailey's house. Of course, on the corner that we have Pitt's House, the tavern, down to the library. She was very impressed with the library as a 1911 Carnegie Building Arts and Crafts style, that it was in such pristine condition. Another possible forum will be the Briggs area where there's two houses in the Briggs stands, Matthew Briggs. She also was, discussed a significant history of the Portuguese indictment, like in 1840s, she started seeing them coming in and buying property and the farming and the end up on the farms.
Is Portuguese indictment?
Yeah.
That was Mrs. Barbosa's story.
Yeah. And so basically it was just a review of all of, you know, that and she was ready to begin the work. So I haven't heard from her yet as to when she's coming down, but she'll let me know. So that's the update on that. Raffa, do you have anything for the historical house murder program? It's always going to be that now, Ken.
As the date for the marker ceremony for her house?
March 31st.
4:00 PM.
Oh, daylight savings is already in.
Oh. That seems to be okay.
The day is up. That is a Thursday, it looks like.
These are Shabbat's day. That should be fine.
Yeah.
These are Shabbat's?
Mm-hmm.
I actually, I'm so old that in the 60s, I remember being outside a stocker shop, I think in Forover, where boycott the grapes poster.
Really?
You probably remember, there was a whole.
I don't know anything about the grapes poster, but.
Migrant workers and stuff like that.
But I know he was union and workers' rights.
Boycott and gather one.
Yep, yep.
No, I think, no.
No.
No. You're thinking of Shay Gavera, maybe?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He was a country, anyways.
He was a good guy though. You can quote me on that. Shay or Shay was, but they both were. She was actually a good person. He was assassinated, I think, by the Cubans because he left, he was a part of the revolution and then he left and maybe in Bolivia?
Colombia, yeah.
All right. Grant applications, we kind of already talked about CPC, so we're all set on that. Under new business rail trail information, the DCR, I'm now on an email chain for the DCR and the Sweet Knoll stuff. So they're launching their design process for the Taunton River Trail at Sweet's Knoll. They have a tentative listening session for stakeholders, which we are part of, to hear about the geographic scope and intent of the project for March 3rd at 1:00 PM. So it'll be a virtual kind of thing.
Can you send us that information?
Yeah, when I get it, yeah. They just kind of said, you know, tentative, except for that. Well, thank you for sharing the 1994 trail study. That was interesting.
I, I had seen that a long time ago on the web. I don't remember, I was looking for something. Report was in the 90s.
94, yeah, yeah.
And because I guess that's when they started thinking about the rail trail. So I had this college or something and I thought they did a great job on it. Very carefully done, hand drawn, a lot of the things. But anyway, I'd seen that maybe in 2000 when I, and so I, I have a copy of that already, but he, I forgot his name, the guy who was.
Jeff.
Jeff. Anyway, and he, and I didn't tell him I didn't have it because I, I wanted, you know, I'm, I'm a generous guy. I don't want to cut people off, but, and also I'm not really a big fan of the bike trail either, but. Yeah, I thought it was a very thoughtful report. And it had like a lot of interesting things that I didn't know about, you know, the environment around there and so forth. So I think from our point of view, if that trail ever gets built, the, the bike trail. Made some contributions, you know, like signed posts and things that had happened here and.
No, I thought it gave good background to the project and I, I liked the, like the environmental stuff and like where, at that point in time where they were planning for it to go, which kind of is the same path that they're now, if you look at the more recent ones. I did start doing some research and I found some links, you know, articles about from last summer, when they got some money and grants and stuff, so.
But we wouldn't even be responsible for those signs. State will pay for those signs. DCR will pay for those, those historic plaques. So same idea is linking it to the One and Fall River, which is amazing and constantly used.
Right.
And really well, you would think, really well respected. And the bike cops go up and down all the time too. But the city didn't pay for those signs. The state came up with those signs that say, you know, this is a turtle and described species you might see. And again, with, points out where mills were, kind of like down at the river there.
I think what Bill was saying, we can help them, give them some information.
Yeah.
Signs need to be.
Right, because especially with Sweet Knolls and then when you get down to Broadcove, Broadcove has huge history, you know, and all along there. And that's a segue right into it.
What a perfect segue. Very excited to share with you. Ken, yours is coming, by the way.
Thank you.
Things that I brought from home. The map that you all have in front of you was printed on an envelope. I believe this was part of the tax bills that were sent out in the 30s or in the 40s. I just want to read to you the bottom section. If you would look at the map, you see the two solid lines? So that is the New Hampshire, the New York, New Hampshire and Hawthorne Railroad. So that is where the railroad ran. Now look at the line that has the little hash marks across it. You see those lines?
Yep.
That's the trolley. And the trolley was named, it's on there. State Street Railway Company.
Wow.
Okay? So that is a map of.
I've seen this before.
Beautiful.
That's okay. I have the original and it's printed on an envelope. You can tell that by the copy, but I just want to read to you the bottom portion. I don't know the year this was made, but you can sort of make reference to it by the last. Dollars and 40 cents. Not all that much different, is it?
No, it's actually.
No, it's not.
I was a little.
So 25% were paved roads. They had three railroad stations. Please look on your map. Over to the right where it says North Dayton Cooperative Stove Company. See the square that says North Dayton Station?
Yep.
Come to the left, see the one that says Segregated Station? And I believe Myrna's father got the wood for the guy who worked there or something. So Myrna has a connection with the Segregated Station. Now keep going to the left and you see the little box that says Dayton Station?
Well, there were three. The North Dayton Station was at the end of Railroad Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah. Is it like, yeah. So you know Railroad Avenue across. So you know Railroad Avenue crosses 138 there, and where I kind of live around there. You go across Railroad Avenue, keeps going for a short distance until it reaches... Also, the main line is down there, the Dyton and Somerset, which is on here. There was a station down there, so if you wanted to go catch a train, you had to get a passenger buggy, get down there, or somebody to take you down there, I guess. The Segregance Station was on Center Street. It was below, in other words, when you go over toward, if you're going to go over the Berkeley Bridge today, they filled that in as a cheapo way of not building a... In other words, they needed to replace the bridge that went over the railroad bed there, but they didn't want to, this is the state, they didn't want to spend the money, so they just dumped a whole load of dirt up until, and then packed it down, and then you could just pave over, that's what they did. So if anybody wanted, in fact, that's mentioned in the, in that report about that PDF, that they would have a problem if they didn't replace the bridge with another bridge. In other words, you'd be biking along, and all of a sudden, there's this big pile of dirt in front of you, which is what you'd... Under the track. And then where would you go with the bike trail? That was addressing, they were hoping that the state would replace the bridge with a new bridge, rather than just dumping a lot of film and bringing it up to the level, which is what they ended up doing. So that'd be a problem for the bike trail. I don't know how they get around that. You'd have to get your bike out of it, have to have some kind of a ramp.
You'd go up a ramp on the sidewalk and back down. Yeah, but that's, that has to do with the plans of that, but let's continue.
...of the Dyton Railroad Station.
Now, which one, though?
The Dyton one, not the Segregance it one, not the North Dyton one, the Dyton.
Now, would this been like on, I don't even know where this was, was this near the Main Street, must have been near the...
Well, if you look on the map, you'll see Main Street, of course, at... It's not at the bottom of Main, it's over to the left more, heading toward Taunton. And if you look at that picture, you see the building in the back that says... That was the factory that was...
So Dyton Stove...
Where was it in reference to say Main Street?
The Dyton Stove Company.
Here's Main Street, and toward Taunton, to the left.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a date on this?
I mentioned that. I don't have a date on that, but what I was going to read to you, the three railroad stations, three post offices, because my copy is a little better than yours, that's all. I know you all know how to read. Five miles of waterfront with excellent wharfs, best of water, steam, and electric transportation facilities, 16, this is good. Trains leave Dyton at 3:00 p.m. They're in New York at 7:00 a.m. the following morning, with equal facilities to point south and west, so it's not as though they only went to New York. The best of high and grade school facilities, two efficient fire companies, public gas and water supply in the North Village, eight churches, now the... Population since 1900. So to date this, all you need is the population of 1900, which you could get from a census, and when was it 20% higher, and then you'd know when this was dated.
There's another way to date this, too, if you didn't have that info. It mentions electric transportation meeting. It was steam, the railroad, so they're talking about the trolley. Trolley didn't turn electric, it was horse drawn, so it didn't turn electric. In fact, the, I have, I have a book that describes the entire...
Here's a picture of the trolley.
This one, I remember they actually moved it, right? So it was here, see how it says Dyton Rock, and now it says Park? I remembered reading.
Dyton Rock Park, that was...
This would have been about 1880 or 1890.
Because technically Dyton Rock, I know, isn't in Dyton. So this is where it was.
But Berkeley was part of Dyton.
Increased population since 1900. So it's either, say in 1920, it was 20% higher. That's a picture of the trolley heading into Somerset.
I just want to, I want to bring this to my board of selectmen's meeting. Every time Rafa complains about taxes, I'm going to say...
I have an honor, I don't want to... But I believe this was the back of a tax bill, and this is telling you the features you have in town.
You paid for your taxes. Sounds like we had a lot more back then.
I have no clue about this, because I am familiar with the trolley system that went to Dyton.
Okay.
And it wasn't that much, it came down from Somerset, I don't know.
It wasn't that much, it was huge.
It was huge.
It was on Main Street.
It wasn't much, it didn't have anything fancy like a present that I recall.
Well, can we let Pat tell her story?
I would love to tell her story.
Pat likes this.
I can tell you that the first railroad was laid in Dyton between 1850 and 60. Why? Increase in population, people needed to move, and...
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Ooh.
I'm sorry, but I spent like 20 years studying the Dyton and Somerset Railroad, and I didn't say the date.
John, don't be too mad.
You've got to remember.
Yeah. Dy, Doc, John, Doc.
The Dyton and Somerset Railroad was a result of...
To the next meeting? Who should write it up and with sources? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sure over at the Berkeley Historical Society, I covered all of Dyton's...
Can I just promise this? Book, the history of Dyton. I didn't make this stuff up, okay?
Oh, okay.
So the first railroad... They did not, thank you, they didn't have an exact date.
Are you a little sensitive about this, or am I?
Well, we'll show you the door.
Will, will Pat continue, please?
Thank you. I'm sorry, what's...
I agree.
Thank you, I thought so.
Thank you.
These are yours, right?
They're heading that way, please, so the other ones can see it? Okay. The reason for the railroad in Dyton, increase in population, they needed to get, they needed to move, the people needed to move, they needed products. Let's talk about Dyton being a strawberry capital of the country, I guess, okay? In 1912, well, the rails, you know, brought strawberries to market. So in 1912, you've heard this story roughly, 15 carloads of bearings from Dyton and Somerset
Unbelievable.
Every evening, from the last week in May through most of June, because that's strawberry time, I mean, it happened from the last week in May through most of June, when strawberries were at their peak. 15 carloads every...
It's unbelievable.
Wow, I mean, that's just... Why strawberries didn't continue in Dyton to be, you know, the product that they were, because of, there were less hazardous crops, you had bad weather which affected your strawberries. Strawberries weren't, farmers changed to different products, because they couldn't always bank on making that kind of money on their strawberries. So they changed to other products. Another...
Oh, that's what I was asking about, yeah.
A small rocky point, there you go. That's from my collection, I think, I don't know if... In 1896, the Street Whale Raid Company built Dyton Rock Park. So that's who built it, and it was built in 1896, and I'm sure you know it burned down in 1921. One day of the week, Wednesdays, was Taunton night, and that's when people would get together. Saturday was Fall River night. Now you could go...
They do.
Ah, they dance, look at the pictures.
Lincoln Park, it's super fun back then.
That's why it was much like a little, a rocky point.
It's a time of innocence.
They had vaudeville shows, there was bowling, pool. You see the swimming hall, and you'll see that there was a sign that they rented bathing suits.
They rented bathing suits.
It was a sign, because if you came, you didn't have your... 5 cents, it's in the, look at the picture, it says, I think it's bathing suit...
Not me.
25 cents, inflation, inflation. But that is what they did at Dyton Rock Park, so the trolleys brought people from all over to go to Dyton Rock Park to enjoy all these amenities.
See, all these little parks, which is so special.
Could you see that fire at Dyton House?
I'm sorry?
Could you see the fire from your house?
21?
Vailing Beach, Dyton Rock Park, used to be part of Dyton still, that time, or wasn't it in Berkeley?
Yeah.
Dyton Rock, Denver.
Dyton Rock is in Berkeley, Dyton Rock Park is...
This was in Dyton.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got confused about that, too.
Down off Pleasant Street. Look at the first picture, you see the two towers? One was a water tower, one was full of water, which obviously didn't help them put the fire, because the place burned down in 21. But that's when you saw the two big spires, and then you saw the other pictures, which was the back of it, okay?
Crazy stuff.
Now, if you wanted to go there, then, I mean, if you wanted to see the remnants of, or where it was, would you get down, what, 2nd Street or...
No, Pleasant Street, you go down Pleasant Street, it's almost the Somerset line, there's nothing there now, it's all houses.
So then, okay.
Yeah, it's all homes.
Grandfather and lots of like...
Yep, because if you, if you look here...
You go half the road, every household.
It's showing you it would continue on to Fall River, I assume nine miles.
I recall that Falmouth was the cap, strawberry capital of the world, from 1900 to World War II.
Really?
And I think it might have been a Mother Jones article.
Falmouth?
Oh.
Falmouth.
I never, I never heard of that.
I just, I might have heard of it, they were, you know, they were moving a lot of the strawberries, and how they would try, you know, they would let kids out of school to pick the strawberries, didn't have ever buried strawberries at that time, I guess, which go all the, you know, sun along, but, just the June berries, but I was shocked to hear that, since we claimed to be...
Right, yeah, but we were earlier.
Anything about Falmouth.
They said 1900 they sold the most, but I thought that was at peace.
Yeah.
I can tell you that the last passenger train... Through Dyton in 1932. And for the trolley, this was interesting, it's about the selectmen that we had at the time. In 1892, and again, all this came from Helen Lane's book, I just, I'm writing it down from Helen Lane's book. In 1892, the Electric Railway could not carry passengers through town for a nickel any longer, so the selectmen in Dyton... And against the railways, because the railway wanted to up their fee. So great, yeah, let's start selecting. I made it, I'm sorry, I didn't make it.
Is this on the agenda, by the way?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I'm on the agenda.
Rail, rail trail information, it's right here.
Yeah, we have that, the society goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a very nice map, and it shows... And there's no streets, I don't think the street has names, but I mean, there's a key over here that tells you, like, what's where, kind of thing.
Those are nice maps.
So when we talked about where would we put signage, my 2 cents worth, I would put location of the Dyton Station.
Yep.
And I put a picture of the Dyton Station on it, kind of thing. I would put another one as close as we could get to Dyton Rock Park, because this is where so many people disembarked from the trolley, not the real train, but the trolley, to go and talk a little bit about Dyton Rock Park, because that is just so huge. And then looking on your first map, if you wanted to put something about the stove company in North Dyton, you know, that certainly, it's historic, people know all about it. It's my recommendation for where you should put markers along the way. Were there other businesses? Of course there were, you know, what are you going to do, put a zillion markers? No, that loses its effectiveness.
Right, right.
So if you put three or four, it's like, okay, this is, this is what was then, and just to draw people's attention to it.
Society has one of those stoves, and Chris and I have one of those stoves. We don't use it.
Really?
Dyke stove, yeah, yeah.
It's not connected to a chimney, of course.
But, um, yeah. I'm looking at kind of, look, 3,500 volumes at the time at the library.
Yeah. Oh, it's neat, this... Taking from Mrs. Valley as well, so.
Very nice.
My son and I have been collecting Dyton Post Gods forever, so you can go on eBay and, I'm not giving you $15 for that, but then you'll never see another one, so you might as well give them $15 for that. I have a huge selection of Dyton Post Gods.
They have a lot of the Dyton Rock Park.
They do, they do.
Just recently, there was one I had.
Oh, really? See, I haven't looked in a long time, because, I mean, we've got a book like this.
They can email, they'll email you, you put in, what you're pressing, like a Dyton mask, and I get an email every time anything related to Dyton comes up. I'll tell you that, because I would be bidding against each other, but...
I'm done collecting, really, I'm done collecting.
Oh, you have, most of them are all on there, that's fine.
That's pretty cool. All right, thank you, Pat, that was...
Thank you, Pat, that was, I loved showing.
So rail trail information, I think we have to do like Broadcove, of course, Sweet Knolls is, you know, good, the Dyton Station, I wrote these down, close to the Dyton, where the Dyton Rock Park was, the Musman Park, and the North Dyton Cooperative Stove Company. So far.
Good.
That's information, you know, that will keep on working.
I think the fact that there are photos correspond with whatever we write.
Yeah.
Even, even better.
Right.
Absolutely, I mean...
You can talk about something all you want, but to see the train station.
Yep, always good, so. The lettering script for the old...
I think Pat's leaving.
Yep, she's leaving. Thank you, Pat. For the Old Town Hall project, when I was here with Jim Aggy, I, when we put the, looked at the case, and I have a key for that. I have a key, and there's a key at the Selectman's Office with Leanne and Karen, to get in there. He mentioned the project that they're doing for this ramp that's going to go here, they have a grant to put a ramp so people can get up on the stage. There will be a railing, a wrought island, wrought iron railing that goes up, goes across, and then over on this side, there'll be more of it with a gate to get up, so that, you know, you just don't fall off, but it's kind of, it'll, it'll look nice. So what he asked is, he wanted a, some script for the letter D in the 1712, like, the building, this building was 1869, which is Victorian period, we would recommend a script that could be used for the D in the 1712. So I did send you an email, it was on the agenda, piece of it, and I don't know if anyone took a look at it.
I apologize, I really didn't have that time, but...
So it was with the agenda, yeah.
You revised the agenda to include it.
So, yeah, after I asked you to do it. So I found three that I liked, I was looking like for the D. Chesterfield, great Victorian type styles, and this one, the highest grade, because I was looking at the D. So, just want to take a look.
Talking about the lettering.
The lettering, yeah.
I think I like that, tricycle makes the pace, I think.
Well, I don't, we want 1712, if this building was 1869, what font would be?
1712 was the year Dyton was incorporated.
I don't know, what font represents 1869?
It's a Victorian era, I researched it.
That's already going to be my vote.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you're saying like down here?
Yeah, like that, like this D.
Be that D.
Or that, yeah.
Or that D.
Or that D, yeah.
Which are very similar.
Very similar.
I'm going to vote on the bicycle one.
The bicycle one?
That's just me.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right.
I'm afraid I have to fill.
Bill, did you have an opinion on which font, which one you liked?
You're talking about the font and all that sort of thing? And, and this is for this building?
Yes, yes. It's going to be on a wrought iron gate here.
This is, if somebody's in a wheelchair, come up there, fall off, that's the.
They're not falling off, it's safety, and the ramp over here makes it accessible for anyone with a wheelchair or walker, so we don't fall off the stage.
I mean, that's, be cool.
Yeah, so you, do you have a preference as to which one?
All right, I'll have to look at it again. What am, what am I comparing, the red thing and?
Just the Ds, just the Ds.
And the three.
Oh, the, the number one, two, and three?
No, the red box?
Yeah.
That's a kind of Victorian script. Then, the one that says swashboard, swishboard, that's another font.
Whether we like it or not, or.
Yes.
What's your preference?
What's your preference?
That's an amazing C, Chesterfield, I mean, that's, I mean, it's interesting, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's a C.
That actually goes for, they used it lots when I was reading about carnivals. And side shows.
It almost looks like a.
But we're looking at the letter D.
Well, anyway, I mean, Bill can have his input, but majority of us.
Yeah, he is a slightly artisticist, if you will, but the C is, that's an amazing C. So what are you saying, that, well, what are you going to be?
Bill, I just explained that whole thing.
Never seen it, Alan.
Just a D.
Just the D. Just the D and the number 1712 for 1712.
Oh, so you're just asking me if I like the D in this?
Yes.
Which is your preference, which D?
I do.
Okay.
I like it, it's pretty neat.
Okay, we're all in consensus.
All right, thank you. I'll let Jim know that we have our input. Okay, I didn't have any correspondence, just no public input, no one ever joined us. Annual report is due April 4.
Ooh. Are you writing that, so?
Yeah, I'll put it together, but I just review the year. If you have anything that you think should be included, email it to me, and we'll, I'll get it started. Our next meeting date is March 8, at 7:00 p.m. And there's nothing else. Motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? A second?
Ken?
A second?
No, I can't second.
Oh, Rafa? Okay, let's vote. Ken?
Aye.
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 Rafa?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you, and let me.
Ooh, 8:35.
8:35.